The Dayton City Commission meeting will not come to order. Please rise or the implication remains standing for the pleasure of allegiance. This morning, implication will be given by Commissioner Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor. Dear Lord, thank you for your many blessings. Please bless this commission that has been chosen to lead. Please grant that our journey will be blessed with your grace. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner-Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion then to approve the minutes from the November 12th meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second motion, Your Honor.
They're probably moving second to approve the minutes from the November 12th meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any communications or petitions?
They are done, Your Honor.
Okay, so I know we got one presentation this morning, one of our favorite. All of our presentations are great, but this is one of our most favorite ones, okay? Mr. Steve Gondal.
Aye.
Give us all the updates in terms of demolition.
Of course, this was not possible several years ago since we were not doing demolition, but now we are. This is again something very special for us.
All right. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, Deputy City Manager and Clerk, Steve Gondal, Director for the Department of Planning, Neighbors and Development, with your Dayton Recovery Plan Demolition Monthly Update for October 2025. Okay, last month, we saw 26 total demolitions. Twenty-five of those were funded through the ARPA funding. One was through the CDBG funding. That brings us to date for 2025 of 246 total structures, the bulk of those being ARPA, 135, with ODOD at 98, and then General Fund 12 and CDBG 1. At the end of September, we had 38 piles. We removed eight in the month of October. We did add one during the month, so we are now standing at the end of the month at 31 piles. And that, you'll see here, is in the historic Inner East Neighborhood where that occurred. For the month, you'll see that again, continuing kind of with previous months, the bulk of our work has occurred either up in the kind of the Main Street corridor area or in the Southern Dayton View neighborhood. Most of the work up in the Main Street area was pile removals, whereas elsewhere it was homes and piles in those remaining areas there. And then, of course, for the year, you'll see again just that kind of that average throughout the city as well as other adjacent and additional neighborhoods. We are fortunate, we only had one property get added to the structural nuisance list in October, and that was just a garage, which we do have that occasionally. So, you know, a low number and also a minor structure. Our pipeline, again, we're focusing more on, we're moving, where have we taken care of a lot of the title, the asbestos survey work, focusing on preparing properties for demolition. So we had 40 that had asbestos remediation done in the month, which allows them then to be ready for demolition either in November and/or December. And our before and afters. Okay, we're going to start in the Southern Dayton View area, 710 Oxford, 713 Oxford. Again, just getting through this area, removing some of the worst structures that have been sitting for some time. 717 Oxford, and then 1,000 for Lexington. Again, like I mentioned, a lot of the work down in this area has been on structures, but we do have some pile work coming up kind of underway and in the next month or so. And then, as I mentioned, in the Main Street area, this was, this work was a lot around, a lot of this work focused around piles, 205 Sandhurst, 300 Fernwood. These were previous fire emergency demos and finally getting through and removing these piles. Same as 213, 215 Middle and 1715 Riverside. 213, 215 Middle, this is right adjacent to the new structure Catholic Services built. We have been in that area. We will continue to be in that area, removing a number of piles. As you know, we did extensive work there around Negley in that vicinity, so now what we're doing is we're going back through and removing the piles. There's still a few more that you'll see there, but those are on another NOP contract coming up here, so those be removed. But I'm doing great work and again, trying to, with 213, 215 Middle, this situation where obviously supporting the investments being made by partners like Catholic Services. So this was literally right across the street from their new facility. So getting that out of the way there and clearing some, and again, the work that Brian Dom's group of Public Works has done with clearing brush in the area, collectively it is making a visual impact on that community. And the same with 1715 Riverside, this sat right on that corridor, and so removing that, again, corridor non, just trying to, you know, the impact it makes when we remove these. And so, all in all, again, really pleased with the pace, but really pleased with just that visual impact that these are having, you know, leveraging it against other investments in these neighborhoods. And with that, I will conclude my remarks and answer any questions you all might have.
Okay, great, really appreciate this, as I said earlier. Questions, comments? Commissioner Turner-Sloss.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Thank you very much. As the mayor has already alluded to, this is, it seemed like it came quick this time around, but nonetheless, the year is going very fast. I want to congratulate you and your staff. This is great work. You're absolutely correct. Thank you for adding the visuals to the presentation, the number of demolition as well as fire piles that have been removed. Fernwood, again, the neighbors, the residents, they were ecstatic and send their regards and great appreciation, as well as Middle and Riverside, to your point, with making that continuing investment with Catholic Social Services, as well as just the whole corridor in its entirety, House of Bread, the investments that we have made with McIntosh Park. So again, thank you for highlighting those efforts by you and the staff. Couple questions. The first is in regards to, I know we have this titled as the DRP Demolition Monthly Update, and knowing that we're coming to a close in 2026, is this something that we will continue on for CDBG and other potential fundings for demolition? I hope so, and that's just a flag, if you will. I know you have to take that back to leadership, Ms. Lofton and Mr. Paulette, as well as Ms. Dixteen, but I think this is something that we want to continue. This is in fact a good news story that we want to make sure that we highlight and we can continue to track the progress with the fire piles as well as the demolition. And then with the number of fire piles, 31, I know that we're making great progress, but with that being said, do you have an idea what the span of NOPs that will lay out for the removal of the fire piles itself? Is it a matter of the end of '26, or what are we looking at in terms of timeframe for those?
So yeah, I can do an updated forecast of the remaining piles that are on contract or NOP, and then if there is a number, you know, in that timeline of where that goes into, how far that goes into '26.
Okay.
Because obviously, you know, we've been working on piles this year. I think the goal is to get to them through '26, but I can definitely kind of pull the, because I think we're on like NOP six or seven, and so I'll send that update over to the City Manager's Office to get to you all. So you kind of see of that contract, how far through we are, what's remaining, and then like the forecast when those are going to occur in either the remainder of '25 or early '26.
Okay, that'd be great. And then, I think I have one more question. And this just to note to flag, and I know I brought this to your attention before, but the structure on Great Miami Boulevard, it's right next to the restaurant, the site on the corner of North Main Street. It's a fire pile that is right on Great Miami Boulevard. If we could give that site some attention.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Okay, and I believe there's some other ones that I had sent over as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Check on this, thank you.
Congratulations, great work.
Appreciate it.
And to the entire staff, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if I'm here, but I think that's water.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you. Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Fairchild.
I'm good, thank you for the report.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Oh, great, okay, thank you so much. So in terms of calendar, Ms. Blackshear, any additions or adjustments to the calendar?
I have none, Your Honor.
Comments? Okay. Ms. Lofton, any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Good morning, Your Honor and Commissioners. I have no additions or deletions to today's calendar, but I would like to highlight item B3, which is an award of contract to bonsai construction in the amount of $1,930,915. This contract supports the replacement and reinstallation of the airfield guidance signage system at the Dayton International Airport, primarily along two of our major airport runways. And I want to really commend the airport management team for its continued proactive management of our airport assets and for leveraging federal grant funding in order to complete this project. The project not only maintains the assets for our airport and helps us stay in compliance with FAA guidelines, but it also delivers important improvements that ensure that airlines operating at our Dayton International Airport have the resources that they need to perform at their highest and best. So want to thank the team for continuously going after funding to maintain the assets at the airport. Also, at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Keisha Kenny, Director of the Water Department, to the podium to provide information on item number 32165-25, which amends the general ordinances related to water, sewer, and stormwater rates and charges. Ms. Kenny?
Good morning.
My name is Keisha Kenny, and I am here to talk about our 2026 through 2028 rate recommendations, I think.
Right off the wing it.
I can.
Go ahead. There we are.
So what we have in front of you guys is this is going to be our rate recommendations for '26 through '28, as I spoke about before. What we're looking at mainly is we're going to start by talking about the investments that we've made over the last 10 years and what we've done with our rates from '23 through '25, which is why we call this continuing to invest in our infrastructure. So as we're sitting here and we're looking at the economic impacts of having a healthy water system where you're doing those continuous investments, you're seeing that this is bringing jobs to the area based upon our O&amp;M investments, but also our capital spending. But also, if you look on the other side, it shows the dollars that we bring in by having a healthy investment in infrastructure investment system. This is so important to the fact where AWWA does a day without water, where they talk about not only the impacts to the quality of life, but also the impacts to the economic investments. And as you can see, those numbers are represented over there on the right-hand side. A day without water, your economic investments will lose about $140 million, but if you also look in the bottom right-hand corner, a week without water can cost economic investments of about $1.2 billion. So we just wanted to highlight how much having a good infrastructure, both on infrastructure investments, but also O&amp;M, how that impacts the region. So as we talk about Dayton's water services, we have three distinct utilities. You have our water system, which is where you can see over there with the elevated storage tanks. We also have our water reclamation facility, which is where you're going to have your sanitary. We also have storm as well, which is used to convey water when we have storms out into our waterways. As we talk about our asset management plan and this implication, this is more along the lines, as you can see, since 2013, we've taken a very aggressive approach to making sure that we are investing back. And this also makes sure that we're having good quality water, but also we're starting to build a generational utility here, so that as we go through and we hand off this utility to those that come behind us, we're giving them a good infrastructure, we're giving them a good investment. So as we continue to hand it off, we're handing off that good, solid utility as we go through generations, as we go along. So as you can see, starting in 2013, we were highly aggressive, and we, as you go through all the way to 2025, again, we're continuing to make continuous investments. I will say that we do have one off where you see $177 million, but this highlights the big investment that we made into vertical infrastructure at our wastewater facility, and this is where we made $138 million investment. And this is to go ahead and put best management practice in and also to give us a higher technology. So as we continue to improve on our water infrastructure, this is one of our bigger investments over at the wastewater treatment facility. So you can see since 2013, we've invested about $461 million into this water utility. And this is based upon having those rate increases as we go through has allowed us to make those investments. Again, as I spoke about before, I talked about the rate increases. And as you can see, when you get to 2020 all the way through to 2025, we'd have consistent, smooth investments. This makes the rate increases very predictable. As you can see, they're very smooth. You don't have the up and downs that you had if you look back at 2004, where we hadn't raised rates in a while, and then all of a sudden, we were like, look, we are not investing in our system, we're having failures, we are not keeping up with technology as we go along. And that's when you start to have those huge increases that makes it hard on our residents to plan. But as you go along, we learn from that experience, and we've come to you guys every three years, and you've actually listened to our recommendations and had the foresight to continue on and make sure that our rates are smooth as we continue to invest. So from 2013 to 2025, I wanted to highlight some of the projects and actually show images, because it's great to talk about it, but actually seeing it kind of puts it in perspective and highlights some of our huge investments we have in our water system. So as you're looking up here on the left-hand corner, that's actually the anaerobic digester project that we talked about being the $138 million project. That's there on the left-hand side. As you go to the right, still at the top, that is actually a dam that we have in our Mad River Well Field. Didn't know if you guys were aware, but we are responsible for dams. This is a part of our investment as well, and this is how we actually recharge our water system, which this is a sustainable practice, but it's also an innovative practice as we go through in that well field. As you move down to the bottom left, that's a stormwater investment that you have there. And then on the right-hand side in the bottom, that's out in our distribution system, and that's one of our larger infrastructure investments out to the distribution system. As you can see, they are working. So as I've talked about, all these utilities, storm, sanitary, and water, but these are the larger infrastructure investments. There's other things that we have to do, which are just our normal operations and maintenance, but also making sure that we are regulatory compliant. And that's a part of asking for the rate increases, but also showing what we're using to do as we continue to invest back in. But as we're regulatory compliant, it's also making sure that we have high quality, but also quantity, because those are both important. As you guys have seen in the news, some of our other Western counterparts are having trouble finding actually good quality water, but also quantity of water. And thank goodness for where we're at in Ohio, that is not one of our issues right now, but we have to continue to invest to make sure that it is not an issue. So as we talk about innovation, Dayton is known for being a very innovative city, and our water system also shows this as well. So what have we done to try to keep our rates low? This is a part of our innovation. So as you guys know, the water side has a lime reclamation facility, which actually produces one of our treatment chemicals. But along with producing lime that we use, we also have decided to start using the byproduct from that lime production, which is where you have CO2. This is something that started when they first put the lime plant in back in the 50s, and we have continued that process, but we've also revamped that by bringing back in that CO2 or carbon dioxide, which has decreased our chemical cost, which is something that we spoke on several times, that chemical costs are continued to increase just by inflationary goods as we continue to go along. Something else that we've done is that we've brought our testing in-house. We're one of the first in Ohio, actually, we are the first in Ohio, to get this PFAS certification. This has decreased the cost that we're having on the water side for testing by about $100,000 a year. Again, this is our way of trying to keep our costs low as we continue to go through. Also, another way of being innovated and thinking outside of the box is we chose to go out and refinance our old debt. This is something that we've done, this is the first time we've done this that I'm aware of, on the water side, and this was a savings of $1.5 million. Again, for us, this is going outside of our normal thinking, but figuring out how we can lower the cost for our residents. And then finally, we've gone out, and you guys have seen the legislation come through often, as we started going out for grants to help us to continue to make those investments, especially large investments into our water system. So based upon all the infrastructure investments I've spoke of and the regulatory compliance that we continue to try to meet, and reinvesting into this regional resource, these are the recommendations that we have. So for 2026, on the water side, we're looking at having an increase of 8.5% on sanitary, 9.5, and on storm of 2.5%, which altogether for that utility is about 8.5% or $24 per quarter increase. For 2027 and 2028, water stays at about 8.5%. Sanitary goes to 9%, which is down from 9.5, and then storm stays at 2.5 for both '27 and '28, which gives us an 8.3% across all three utilities for '27 and '28, which is about a $25 per quarter increase for '27 and then a $27 increase for '28. But what does that mean? That's about 28 cents a day is how this spreads out over that quarter. But this also continues to keep our rates at a lower portion of that Pickle Study that goes out every year, that looks at the 66 water utilities that are out throughout the area in southwest Ohio, around our area. And as you can see, Dayton is generally the 10th lowest. We are always generally in that lower half even of these 66. And if we raise our rates, we'll still predict that we'll be in that lower half of rates as we continue to make sure that we make our rates as affordable as possible, but continue to have best management practices and stay abreast of what the newer technology is as we move forward. As we talk about affordability, Ohio, I'm sorry, not Ohio, EPA has an affordability rate of about 4.5%, and that's based upon the median income of the residents in your area. As you can see, for '25, we're below that rate at 2.57, and even if you look at the rate increases for '26, '27, and '28, we are still below that 4.5% affordability rate. As you can see, we're sitting at 2.79 for '26, we're at 3.03 for '28, and for, sorry, went ahead, '26, we are at 2.7, '27, we're at 3, and then at '28, we're at about 3.2. So we're still below that 4.5% affordability rate that we speak of during our KPIs as we go through and talk about our budgets. So to recap, what we're asking is to continue our investments and our aggressive investments into our water system, to continue to be able to cover our operation and maintenance costs and to make sure that we're continuing to invest in this generational infrastructure investment as we continue to go along. If anyone has questions, you can always view our utility here at DaytonOhio.gov.YourWater, which talks about our three different utilities and provides additional information about our regulatory compliance, our quantity and quality as we move through. And now, do you guys have any questions?
Okay, yeah, first of all, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are wishing to speak on the City Manager's recommendations?
None on City Manager's recommendations.
Okay, good. So Commissioners, comments, thoughts on the presentation? Great presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Turner-Sloss.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Kenny, thank you very much. The mayor took the words right out of my mouth. Great presentation. I appreciate the thorough review. Thank you for all the great work that you and the staff continue to do on a daily basis in making sure that our water is not only as safe, as clean, and that it is in fact accessible. So kudos to you and your entire team for the great work. And couple questions that I do have. The first is, I think that, to your point, it may be even that the last couple of slides just really highlighting what we're doing and what the recommendation is before this body in terms of making those investments for the next generation and making sure that we have an aggressive means of paying it forward, if you will. And so with that, I know that we have the rate increase over the three-year period. So being that we are making these investments, and we've started since 2013, right? And I think you gave the number of $461 million that have been invested. And so with that being said, with the aggressive model that we now have in place, and that there is a three-year span where we're looking at rate increase, because we're making these investments, and we have been for quite some time, does that mean the next three years, if in fact this is approved at this juncture, will we be looking at additional rate increase to continue on this model? Or because we're doing, we're making all these investments upfront, we may not have to look at rate increase down the line after the period of '20, what is it, '28? We'll be looking at?
I would say based upon the inflationary increase and the regulatory compliance landscape right now, we probably will continue to have rate increases as we go through, just as all other goods increase. For us to get our maintenance in, which will be our contracts and materials, all that different, our pipes and whatnot, we'll probably continue to see that increase as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then with that, what is the model or what practice will we have in place? Are there PSAs? What level of awareness, education that we will provide to the public? And then with that being said, are there any provisions in place? Because to your point, right, we're seeing inflation everywhere. Food costs, housing costs, utility costs, and all the while too, we have to make sure that we're making our investments with infrastructure and protecting the goods and services that we provide itself. So are there any provisions in place to assist individuals? And what are we doing with the, well, first let me stop, because I gave you like three or four questions. I apologize. Go ahead.
Okay, so in order to let the public know that the rate increase is coming out, we are going to make sure that we are posting it on our social media, we're working with the city, but the water department also has a LinkedIn page that will make sure that we're talking about these different increases. We're also going to make sure that we're at the presidential forum as well to make sure that we're talking about it there, and we're trying to reach out to neighborhood groups, but we'll also put them into the bill inserts so that they know that these rate increases are coming.
That's great, thank you. And then, so with all of that being said, are there any provisions in place to assist those who may need? Is there an extension that we're going to provide for the turnaround time? Because I know there has been some concerns, well, I get my bill on this day, and then I have three days, or if less than that, to turn around and pay the charge before there is a penalty of a late charge. Are we expanding the, and I know that may be a conversation for finance.
Sure, so just a couple of things to clarify. We already currently partner with several social service agencies. And so if there are residents or customers who are having trouble paying their bill, we can take payments for those individuals through those entities. So we routinely have churches cap making payments for, on behalf of residents, if they seek that assistance and qualify. We are exploring how to bring some of that programming in-house. However, our infrastructure, our systems aren't set up to do that at the moment, and as we go through replacing our current ERP system, that may give us a little more flexibility in manning some of that out in-house. But Finance and Water has been doing that research. But at current, individuals do have other places, and our staff in Finance that does the billing for Water are very familiar with those agencies. So when a customer calls and says that they're having trouble, they have the ability to refer those, for those individuals to particular entities and work with them to put payment plans and stuff together. So there are systems in place to help and assist individuals if they're struggling with their bill. The second thing I want to clarify is that there is currently on the bill for utilities, it's not it's not a penalty, it is a discount if you pay early. So people have more than 30 days to pay their bill once they receive it. If they pay their bill early, they're getting a discount. It's not a penalty or a late penalty. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
No, I hear you on that, but I speak from experience. When you get that bill, there is also, you have the charge date, but then the day of the late fee is like three days or a day after. Like, the days are very close, and so you don't have that window.
After the due date, which is 30 days past your actual date, we can talk on, I can walk you through that a little clearer, but I just wanted to, we don't charge late penalties. We ask for an early discount if you pay before, there's two due dates that are on that bill, and they're within a few days of each other.
Yeah. But the other issue is the timing. That's the piece.
Yes.
It's not getting to households or individuals in time for when those charges, whatever the case may be, when that charge hit. And again, I speak from experience, and I've also, we've had a number of complaints about the bill itself. So we can definitely have a conversation offline.
Sure.
But thank you. My point is, with all of that, is that the public is fully aware that there are resources and there are agencies that can provide that level of support, and that, again, that the public is aware that this, the rate increase will in fact take place in 2026 of January. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I think the point of the 28 cent per day, I think that's how you have it laid out. I think that may be something that we want to highlight as we move forward with the social media piece and bringing everyone up to speed and letting them know how the courtesy and amount of given time so that people can make those necessary adjustments in their finances. So thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation this morning, and great work to you and your staff.
Thank you.
Good?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Fretschel.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but you know, this presentation reminds us of the difficult issues around affordability that our residents, particularly on fixed income, are going to face because, you know, we need to make these investments to protect water because, you know, important for everyone's well-being to have water. But the cost for our residents, particularly on fixed income, is going to be harder and harder. And so I think it raises issues to the broader society of how we make this society work for everyone, providing the income that our residents need to be able to afford the things that are required for life. So thank you for the presentation. Thank you for pointing out that our affordability is below what best practices are, but it doesn't change the fact that many of our residents are going to be finding a pain point in this, with these increases. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
Yeah, I don't have much. I really do appreciate that point. You know, it is good to know that, you know, we're priced efficiently. So it's going to be painful no matter what, but thanks for your work.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, my colleagues, that our focus needs to be on these two things, making sure that we're building an efficient system that's providing good, clean water at a good price and focused on what our residents can pay and making sure that it's hitting that price point, too. And I think the Water Department's done a good job. I really appreciate this. I appreciate the care put into this presentation. The two points I'd like to make here are, first, I lived through, I came on the commission at a time where there hadn't been new investment, and we had to make huge changes just to provide clean water for people. So this is a case of either you pay now or you pay more later, which is just silly. So I appreciate my colleagues' foresight, forward planning all these years. This is a legacy we're going to leave for our kids and our grandkids, just like the bridges we built in the last decade. So I thank you for that. Also, I never missed a chance to mention one of my favorite charts, which is the chart that you show every year showing the investment in our water system and the fewer, every year, fewer and fewer breakages, which is a wonderful chart. It shows investment in the foresight, which means in future years, fewer breakages and less cost for us down the road. So the key point for us in all this is that investment made now means whatever the cost is in the future, it will be less than it would have been, and that's smart management. So thank you, my colleagues, and thank you, Water Department, for your work on this.
Yes. I'd like to add that one of the things that you did not mention in your great presentation was one of my favorite areas, the area dealing with the lime sales and how we continue to lead the nation in terms of production of lime and the money that's generated because of that work as well. Added to that are the things that you mentioned that I'd really like to take note of and highlight a little bit more, is the fact that as we have worked on these things, I know I've been on the commission since 2014, as we talked about all these type of issues and looking at pipe replacements and all the things associated with that. Where we are at this point in time, based upon just your presentation, looking at the affordability, which makes sense, we talked about those issues in terms of how we have continued to be stable in that process and also providing the best quality product as far as the water that we have, as far as not only this region, but much in the United States. Additionally, low rates, we just talked about that again, to make sure that we continue to do the best we can in those spaces. Innovation, such as the work that you've done in terms of working with PFOS, which is a very significant area, costly area, saving 1.5 million dollars by doing the PFOS work in-house and being recognized for that. And again, investments, and I'd like to end by saying, high-quality product as well. Okay? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you, and I would be remiss without introducing the water staff that all came today.
Okay.
To emphasize the importance of continuing to have a good rate structure.
Okay. Give you guys a hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny.
Okay. So commissioners, do we have any additional questions or comments for the City Manager? Or Deputy City Manager? Commissioner Turner's loss?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay, you all good? Okay, then, accept the motion then to approve the City Manager's recommendations.
I move to accept the City Manager's recommendations.
Second.
Okay, then I probably move in second to approve the City Manager's recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, legislation, please, Ms. Blackshear.
First reading resolution number 6904-25, withdrawing the objection to the renewal of liquor permit number 65164770005 renewal, Ohio Chiefs Bar and Lounge LLC, 1124 Leo Street, Dayton, Ohio 45404, and declaring an emergency.
Being declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of resolution number 6904-25.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, so probably moving in second to have resolution number 6904-25, declare as emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Second reading, emergency resolution number 6904-25, withdrawing the objection to the renewal of liquor permit number 65164770005 renewal, Ohio Chiefs Bar and Lounge LLC, 1124 Leo Street, Dayton, Ohio 45404. Mayor Memes?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner's loss?
Aye.
First reading, emergency ordinance number 32165-25, amending sections 50.2D, 50.02D, 50.03A, B, C, and D, 50.06D, 50.07, and 5411 of the revised code of general ordinances relating to the Department of Water and declaring an emergency.
Your Honor, being declared as an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of an emergency ordinance number 32165-25.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, so probably moving in second to have a resolution number 32165-25, declare an emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
First reading ordinance number 32166-25, consenting to perform bridge repairs on the McCall Avenue Bridge over US Route 35, structure file number 5701589, located on US Route 35 in the city of Dayton, and agreeing to cooperate in matters incidental thereto, including the execution of agreement necessary to implement this ordinance. First reading ordinance number 32167-25, consenting to perform concrete bridge repairs on US Route 35 over Home Avenue, structure file numbers 5701600 left and 5701619 right, both located on US Route 35 in the city of Dayton, and agreeing to cooperate in matters incidental thereto, including the execution of agreement necessary to implement this ordinance. First reading ordinance number 32168-25, revising, amending revised code of general ordinances, RCGO, sections 53.01, 53.02, 53.06, 53.22, 53.27, 53.28, 53.29, 53.40, 53.41, 53.43, and 53.99, 53.99, to provide for prevention of potential public water supply pollutants and provide for penalties for violations. First reading resolution number 6905-25, declaring the intention to appropriate real property interests in parcels 70, 16T, 29SHNT, and 30T in connection with the Keelwee Street Safety Improvement Project. First reading resolution number 6906-25, approving the submission of a grant application for the state fiscal year 2026 Ohio Airport Grant Program to the Ohio Department of Transportation, Office of Aviation, authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the State of Ohio Department of Transportation, Office of Aviation, in an amount not to exceed $420,375.50 on behalf of the city of Dayton. Second reading resolution number 6901-25, adopting a business district speed zone policy. The Mayor Memes?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph? Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner's loss?
Aye.
Second reading resolution number 6902-25, honorarily naming Fitch Street between Hawthorne Street and Germantown Pike as Raymond Hummond's Way for a two-year period. Mayor Memes?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph? Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner's loss?
Aye.
Second reading resolution number 6903-25, ensuring compliance with the Land and Water Conservation Fund Project 39-00750, and establishing policy for open space utilization at Carrick's Corner Park. Mayor Memes?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph? Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner's loss?
Aye.
That concludes legislation, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you very much. So Ms. Blackshear, we have any citizens who are registered to speak on whether it was on their mind? I would say on Callan Island, it's not.
We have one citizen who has registered, and I would like to remind that citizen of our three-minute time limit. I call to the podium Paul Kerrigan.
Paul Kerrigan, 1525 Pershing Boulevard. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I want to start by thanking the mayor and his aide-cameraman for coming out to our house, so us a neighborhood on Pershing Boulevard on the 20th of October, to sit and stand there and discuss with us. You got to see and hear from people who are absolutely disgusted with the speeders and the violations going on in our street that have been going on for decades. Let's face it, this isn't new, it's old. Along those lines, you got to hear from one of the people who lost a vehicle at the bottom of the hill with that wreck a handful of years. Four or five, excuse me, five or six damaged cars, or a telephone pole had to be replaced. You got to hear from those people. I thought that was important. And we left that meeting with some sort of understanding that there had to be something done, agreed? We didn't know what was going to be done. You had made a suggestion, which I'm not going to voice here, but the fact that you're willing to do something or agree that there is an issue is important to us. I have noticed an increase in police presence during the day since my complaint of there being virtually no police presence there. I don't know what's going on at night. As a matter of fact, two Mondays ago, one of the, excuse me, SUVs, police SUVs pulling a, one of those signs that has your speed and the local speed, the legal speed, where they park around the city, and he sat in a church lot at the top of the street for about three or four minutes. I'm thinking, oh, my Lord, he's going to place this in our street. That's a good idea. Maybe the mayor had something to do with that. No, he pulled it out a few minutes later, down the street, and out of the neighborhood, towing that sign with him. Left hopeless again. And I thought I'd bring this up, because the weekend, the Saturday, the Sunday before, the mayor came, and I went up and down the street, and I'm talking to 1400 or 1500 block of Pershing Boulevard, just that section. And I tried to talk to all the neighbors. I knew most of them, not most of them, half of them, and the results were this, which you can't really see. These are all the houses, the 14, Mayor Mount at the top, St. Charles at the bottom. Down this way, you have St. Hell, uh, yeah, St., excuse me, there's a parish down there, can't think of the name of. There are three speed bumps on that street, small, little, you know, less than a half a mile, St. Charles. Look at all these people, all the yeses, all the yeses. The people that have X's in the street or on their house, they just weren't home. I didn't get to talk to them. Not one person said no, except for old man Doug, and the man has a PhD in horticulture, and all they could say, he didn't say no, he said, "Speed bumps are for children, speed bumps are for children." So I'm guessing he was a no. I don't see any no's on there. Maybe there's some in there. How is this not, how does this petition not pass? How are we not getting a speed bump? It's beyond comprehension to me, beyond comprehension to me. So I'm hoping something can be done, something, some action, anything. Can't get a speed bump? What about putting one of those speed signs, indicators, on our street? I don't want cameras, that's not necessary, that's overkill. Something needs to be done. This has to end.
Okay.
That's all I have to say. Thanks again.
No, appreciate you. Thank you for your comments. They're still in process.
That concludes the speakers, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, Ms. Lofton, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor, but I would like to wish everyone a safe and peaceful Thanksgiving.
Okay. Ms. Blackshear, any closing comments?
Just the staff from the commission office wishes everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner's loss, any closing comments?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the Planning and Neighborhood Development Department. Mr. Dongle, thank you for being here this morning. Thank you for the presentation. Ms. Kenny and the entire Water Department or the management staff, thank you all for being here this morning as well, and congratulations on all the great work that you are all doing. And I also, too, would like to, I know Ms. Lofton had mentioned the work that's being done at the airport, and so the Department of Aviation, all the great work that's happening there and the investments. And to your point, I believe the grant was like 1.7 million dollars. So that speaks volumes as to what the staff is doing and the level of commitment that they have. So thank you for highlighting that. And just a couple of points brought to you by Ms. Reed. Thank you, Ms. Reed. And Mr., Ms. Dorf, excuse me, Commissioner Joseph wanted to make mention that the Dayton Dragons, they're launching a new holiday attraction this year called Deck the Diamond, a walk-through light experience at Day Air Ballpark. The event features more than 1 million lights, theme displays, activities, and family-friendly entertainment throughout the season. Tickets are $12 Monday through Thursday, $14 Friday through Sunday, and $16 for flexible date tickets. So again, this information is provided by Commissioner Joseph and Ms. Reed. Thank you very much. The Dayton Holiday Festival and Grand Illumination will take place downtown this Friday, beginning at 4:00 PM with activities, live entertainment, and family-friendly events. The tree lighting and illuminating parade will start at 6:30 PM in Courthouse Square, featuring over 150,000 lights and festive performances. Hopefully, the weather will be decent with, for us. I know tomorrow is supposed to get down to some frigid temperatures. And thank you, Mr., I believe, Mr. Harrington?
Carrington.
Carrington, thank you for being here this morning. I really appreciate it. And Mr. West, thank you for being here this morning. Minister Ashton Doppler, thank you for being here as well, and thank you for extending the invite. And Mr. Carrington, I believe, Ms. Lofton, if I'm not, if I have that correct, we do have an update, or we're still in flux and still trying to? have an update or we're still in flux and still trying to identify, uh, a resolution to the, the speeding on, um, Pershing Boulevard. I, I do know that there is, there is a, a number of conversations that are taking place, um, and we're still working through that, um, understanding that unfortunately it is an issue citywide, and so with manpower, staffing challenges, we're trying to find ways and, and creative means to, uh, address those concerns, as well as I believe that Ms. Dikstein has, um, tasked the staff with identifying means to streamline the, uh, speed bump petition process. And so again, that work is, is, is being done and conversation is being had. And then lastly, I will just wish everyone a happy and safe and, and very joyful and peaceful, uh, Thanksgiving this, this, uh, this Thursday, as well as I hope that people have time to rest and enjoy time with family and friends, and happy holidays to my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that point that, uh, Commissioner Turner-Sloss just mentioned around looking at, um, looking at the process of getting the speed bumps. I think we've recognized that it's insufficient and looking to improve it, and it, it should be one part of a solution for you, Mr. Kerrigan. And thank you, Mr. Doppler, for being here and giving us the opportunity to honor Raymond Hummels, and we look forward to the day that we put that sign up and we can join you, um, in the community to celebrate, um, his service to the community. Um, I have a couple announcements. The Dayton Live Creative Academy invites students to join them on December first for their after-school intensive for Back to the Future. Uh, these are open to students who are interested in the performing arts and want to learn more. Previous theater or dance experience is not required. Uh, participants will receive, show merchandise, snacks, and a ticket to the Wednesday night performance of Back to the Future at the Schuster Center. And then the, um, Dayton City, um, Cat Cafe is inviting you to stop by on December second for part of their, um, fundraiser, plans for Paws. Um, they're located at 1513 East Fifth Street from, and the event is from five to eight. The proceeds will, um, help fund their nonprofit partners, Gem City Kitties, Together Gem City Cat Cafe, and Gem City Kitties and Gem City Vet Work for the Improvement of the Lives and Cats of Dogs in Dayton. And then, um, Commissioner, the forecast is for cold. So I invite people to, um, get out their, um, their thermal underwear, their gloves, their scarves, their hats, and bundle up because you don't want to miss coming down for the Dayton Holiday Festival and enjoying the community and kicking off the holiday season and, um, being one of, it's one of our Dayton gems, and I encourage you to come and don't let the cold weather scare you away, but come prepared. And then finally, I too am very grateful. I'm grateful for the opportunity I have here to serve our community. I'm grateful for my family, my wife and my daughter, my friends. I encourage you to take some time to pause, to be mindful of what you're grateful for as we celebrate Thanksgiving, and, uh, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Shaw?
I appreciate that. Um, just a couple of announcements. The AFL-CIO is offering a pre-apprenticeship readiness program for community members interested in pursuing a skilled trade. No prior construction experience is required. Additional information and applications are available at the City Commission Office and at DaytonAFLCIO.org. Uh, also, the Downtown Dayton Partnership will launch its Holiday Hop beginning this Saturday, November 29th through December 26th, 2nd. Community members can pick up a card and collect three stamps from any of the more than forty participating local businesses to win twenty-five dollars in downtown dollars to spend at these businesses. Uh, to learn more, please visit DowntownDayton.org/hop. And also, I'd like to, um, to wish everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Okay, uh, thank you so much. You know, um, the, um, the cold, uh, last year for the Christmas parade, it was cold as well. I think, uh, as much fun as we had, there's only thing that sort of neutralized the fact that we had so much cold, uh, weather last year. I think it's going to be colder, uh, tomorrow or this Friday. So again, for those who bundled up, uh, last year, bundle up again this year. Uh, I think we have a lot of hand warmers that we passed out, that did a lot of that last year myself, uh, for those who, um, are going to be in attendance as well. Additionally, I do want to, um, address, uh, speed bumps. You know, those are issues that are very popular and also very unpopular. So, uh, we continue to have a lot of debate, uh, on even what's happening relative to Gettysburg and the movement that we did. Now, I understand, I do understand, we had that same conversation across the city. Um, I'm surprised that when I look at your street, as steep as it is, that we have not had more accidents. Uh, and I think, uh, the care and the attention that you brought by coming down here, uh, which is one of the reasons why I went to go take a look at it myself, is something that we're consistently working on. As we go through that process, as I mentioned to you, um, a couple weeks ago, we have to be very careful to make sure, and you're doing some of the legwork for us, and that's going to be very helpful. And that reason, uh, presentation, when that comes to us, we'll do due diligence relative to solving that problem. Again, thank you for being here. Additionally, I want to also take this moment to wish, um, Commissioner Turner-Sloss a happy birthday, although it's belated. It was this past Thursday. Of course, you're probably thirty-nine again.
Yes.
Okay, we won't go any further than that. Um, also want to acknowledge the food bank, uh, the great work that they continue to do. I think they're doing another, um, uh, food distribution today, uh, thinking in Huber Heights. Uh, they continue to have these pop-up, uh, food bank, uh, programs, especially because of some of the uncertainty that's happening at the federal level. Uh, again, I think they did a presentation, um, uh, last week about some of the kinds of different, uh, spaces that they're going to be distributing food, again, to assist people during these trying times, especially during the holidays. And also, I want to say, uh, just like my colleagues, this is very special. Every time we have a holiday, we take time to not just do the shopping, the celebration, but also take time to reflect on the value that we have with our fam, our family, as well as our friends, and take some time to rest, take some time to thank people who have been a part of your life, making good things happen, and, I think if I have another note here, gratitude. Be very, very thankful for where we are, the progress that we continue to make, uh, as you see and you listen to our staff in terms of some of the kind of things that we're doing to improve, uh, the quality of life that we have in the city of Dayton. Again, um, Commissioner Shaw raised the issue on a continuous basis, we're increasing the number of training programs for more and more of our young citizens and even some of those who have maybe a little bit of gray hair even, to have more and more opportunities as far as jobs are concerned in this city. It's one of the reasons why we have been able to increase our median income by over twenty thousand dollars over the last ten, twelve years. That's very, very special. And every time we look at some of the issues and the challenges that are affecting us, raising medium income, trying to keep pace with inflation, and trying to improve the quality of life is a major, major task as far as the city is concerned. So I want to thank you again for that work that you're doing in that space. And with no further business to come before this commission, love and peace for all and hatred for none, this meeting is adjourned.